Moore?
Here.
O'Kane?
Here.
Chaner?
Here.
Scott?
Here.
Waters?
Here.
Please stand for a moment of silent prayer followed by the Pledge of
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the liberty of our borders, our states, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Interview for Library Board of Trustees, Mr. Jim Wharton, former Mayor of Sioux City, Iowa.
Good afternoon, members of the council. I'm Jim Wharton, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to talk to you. I've served one term on the board, and just telling Helen, I've been on some boards where I can't wait till the term ends. This is not one of those boards. We really have an incredibly progressive type of board at the library who's doing whatever they can to give the staff direction and how to continue to meet the needs of the people in Sioux City. It's funny, I was just talking to some friends here. Only come here when I'm interviewing for board positions, it seems like, but when I said on the other side, a lot of the votes, in fact, most of the votes were three to two, and I'm hoping we're not at a three to two to vote today, you know? I'd like to be, get up to four if I could this time, Bob, you know?
Well, we're gonna do our best and try to get somebody besides Dan and I to go along with it.
I understand, but thank you for the opportunity to do this. I really, I really appreciate it. And our, our library, you know, it's new, it's kind of a new day for a lot of city organizations. We're trying to figure out how we adapt and respond to federal cutbacks that are impacting our library in terms of popular programs. I don't read physical books hardly anymore. I use an e-reader all the time. I love to read, I know, read a lot, and the service that we use for that, it's under some threat now in terms of how we're going to pay to continue to provide the interface, which I think, was it Bridges? Is that what it's called here, Bridges? Things like that, that we really have to be a little bit more, I guess, more analytical than what we, what we typically would be, and we'll get that done. I don't, I don't have any, any concern about that at all, but it does force us to take a look at things in a whole different manner. And, and one thing I would say about Helen and her team, we, we know about these things in months and months before we have to deal with them, which is really good. She does a great job of keeping our board up to date on things that are coming down the road to give us some time to figure out how to address them. I will tell you that the library staff is incredibly talented. The outreach that they do is very impressive to me. I've been in a lot of different communities, visiting her for two or three months at a time, and this library is by far one of the best ones I've ever seen in terms of management and the service that it, that it offers the community. So I'd be honored to be able to serve another term with this board and would be happy to answer any questions that, that you might have.
Well, I do have a question.
Yes.
Were you getting ready to walk away?
I was hoping so, Julie.
No, I just wanted to say that I know that Helen and her team really had to pivot during COVID. Just because there's no gathering and they, you know, provided and applied for the, took the money and bought the phones and the electric readers and everything. Is that where you see us being able to continue? I mean, I know the cutbacks, you know, we're talking about giving up the branch on the north side and going to a book locker or a dispensing.
Yeah, I would tell you, we're, we're talking about all of those things in our boards now in terms of what happens to Perry Creek, what happens to some of these services. And I think that the bottom line on any of these is if indeed we were put into the position of having to figure out where, you know, we systematically make some cuts, that it's not obvious to the majority of the people in the community that the service, the interface and everything stays the same. That we continue to provide the services, the outreach, which, which this library does an incredible job of, I think we've just got to figure out a way to continue to provide that without any disruption of service. And I'm confident we're going to do that. Helen knows more about the library business than I'll ever know, and, and she, I, I would say she's not only a state leader nationally, she, she knows what we, what we're going to have to do to adapt to these changing conditions. So I'm confident we'll continue to provide the city a wonderful service. This library is exceptional. I used to think when I, you know, when I come to the, I think of Bob and my former colleague, Joanne Gruskin, who, who we served with on the council, and Joanne put her heart and soul into the creation of that library. And to me, it's kind of continuing that legacy that we need to do, so I'm proud to be a part of it. So I hope that hasn't your questions, Julie. We don't know what's going to happen.
I know.
But we'll, we'll, we'll get there. We, you know, we have the ideas and the people and, and the talent to be able to do that.
My little snippet of advice kind of brings me back to my small business at the restaurant.
Right.
When I wanted to start looking, getting close to the new year coming, last quarter, I start looking forward and I challenge my vendors, I, I need to start cutting more costs, but I don't want to do it on food quality. I'm not changing my food quality, so anything that goes in the trash, I need to find a better price. You need to find me on all my paper goods, my storage, my disposables, all those kinds of things that the customer doesn't see, feel, use, plastic gloves, the nitro gloves, all of those kinds of things. So those are areas that I would encourage you guys to look at as a team. What can we change in those kinds of things? Utilities, hours of operations maybe that you could shift or shorten that would, you know, shorten up the use of the utilities, things like that, wear and tear, things that need to be fixed.
Yeah, I would tell you, I think all of these things either are happening or are going to happen with this board.
That's right.
And one, one good thing is this board that we have right now asks a lot of questions, just very similar to what you're asking. We're always looking for ways, there's a way we can do it better, more efficiently, more economically, so.
Keep your quality of what you want to offer your customer.
Right.
While fixing things behind the scenes to make that happen.
I think we consider this kind of a business unit of the city, and so it's our, it's our, it's our, it's, it's our responsibility to make sure that we're dealing with that appropriately. So all good points. Thank you.
Jim, I remember, I remember the last interview, and you impressed me when you were asked what I consider a very tough question to be asked and to answer, and you just came out and said, said what your position was.
I know what this question's going to be because.
That's true leadership.
Yeah, well, thank, thank you. The question alludes to a library and the, and the resources and what a library is. And there's a reason we call it a public library. It's a public library, which means you're the public, people in this chamber are the public. Anybody in this community is a member of the public, and we have to make sure we're addressing what they want. And we're, we're doing that. We're doing that with, with responsibility, I think, that you would approve of. And the pressures, you know, who would ever thought four or five years ago that these questions would come up the library on, you know, contents of library and everything? Very sensitive to that, very sensitive to that. But there's a reason they call it a public library. What you want to read, Dan, may not be what I want to read, but that doesn't mean I'm going to take the books off the shelf of what you want to read just because I don't like them, you know? And that's, that's my mindset. I'm speaking only as an individual member of that board, but we're here to serve the public, and that's what we'll continue to do.
Exactly. Thank you, Jim. Alex, did you have something?
Jim?
Hi, Alex.
Well, Jim, I apologize that I'm not able to be there, and I'm not going to pretend for a second that I know how the mayor would vote, but you know, when you go over long, longer than three minutes, you, you start diminishing your chances, buddy, but I wish you.
Okay, it's time to quit. Nice to talk to all of you, and, yeah.
I was just giving him as much time as I normally give you, Alex. You have anything else for him?
Thanks, Jim. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank, thank you all very much.
All right, we're going to go to the consent agenda, which is item three through 15C. Consider them to pass unanimously unless a separate roll call votes asked for by a council member. If you want to speak on an, an agenda item, please come to the podium as I read that item. Anybody wishing to speak on an item not on the agenda, please come up under Citizen Concerns, and remember to always state your name for the record. I'll move the consent agenda. Second. Three is a reading of the May 12 City Council minutes. Four is a resolution amending the Community Development Department's authorized payroll complement by extending two temporary Neighborhood Services Project Coordinator positions. Mayor, I just want to ask Jill a quick question, please. The extension on these two temporary Neighborhood Services Project Coordinator positions, that goes, that'll take it through December 31 of 2026?
Yes, correct.
Is that correct? Oh, that's great. So thank you for what you're doing to get these grants and, and getting the grants increased. You've got a couple of others, I think, in here where you've actually increased what the grant amount was, so thank you. Five is a resolution authorizing or awarding a purchase order to Zamboni Company USA for two Zamboni ICers for the IBPI Center and the Tyson Event Center. Six is a resolution adopting the 2025 Transportation Safety Action Plan completed by Simcoe under the Safe Streets and Roads for All Program. Seven is actions relating to grants. A is a resolution approving a grant amendment five to the sub grant, sub grant agreement with the Iowa Finance Authority for the American Rescue Plan Act Urgency Rental Assistance Funds. B is a resolution authorizing the submission of a Community Development Block Grant.
I'm going to have Jill come up on both of those.
What's that?
I'm going to have Jill come up and speak on both of those, please.
Okay. Relief and Economic Homeless Operations Grant Application to the Iowa Economic Development Authority for Homeless Shelter Operations.
Jill, I know I gave you fair warning that I was going to have you come up. You know, these are hot topics, both of them are. They're very both hot for the city, hot for national news, hot at the state level. You know, everybody wants the cities to reach out and help those who are most in need. We've been waiting to find out, are we getting funding? Where's it coming from? How much is it going to be? So can we talk about this 2.9 million a little bit?
Yeah.
What we will do with it and how it's dispersed?
Jill Wandersheid, Neighborhood Services Manager. So these are emergency rental assistance funds that were allocated out to the state during COVID. They're COVID funds from the Department of Treasury. And we initially got a few hundred thousand several years ago, and they've just increased that over and over again because we've been using it for homelessness prevention program and rapid rehousing, which is much needed. The grant is now kind of at its tail end. It's going to expire in September, and there are no extensions allowed for that. And so we've gotten all the funds that we're able to spend by September, but they did reach out again, they being the state, and asking if we would be interested in working with LSI and Mary Tralia Community House, or Mary J. Tralia Community House, to support some of their refugee families. Obviously, they've had a lot of their funding taken back, and so we're taking on an additional funding allocation to then pass through to those families that are refugees that are here in Sioux City that have been resettled by both of those agencies. And so that'll help with rental assistance for them through the end of September.
And is that separate from this 2.9?
It is a part of it, so it's just plus-ing up our number even more to allow for that final push of rental assistance specific to those individuals and families.
All right, and then the homeless operation grant that we're going to apply for?
Yep, so we also received CDBG CV funds, which are, again, related to COVID from the state. The state received those from HUD. We spent those quite a while ago. They reached out to us. They had an additional portion of the allocation to sub-grant out before, before those expired, and so they asked if we would be interested in basically being a pass-through to the warming shelter. And so we'll get $1,500 to cover our staff time, and then the remaining 126, or 125,000 will go to the warming shelter to support their operations, basically their staff and their operating costs for those months it'll cover.
And it's exclusively to them?
Just to them. Yeah, the state made that decision. The state told us how they were allowed to be spent.
Right, so we're just a pass-through?
Mm-hmm, yep, exactly. Happy to do it.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. All righty, thank you.
Thank you.
Much for that. Appreciate it.
Here's a resolution supporting submission of an Iowa Economic Development Authority application for workforce housing tax credit program by BNC. D is a resul- Excuse me, I need to abstain on that item. Conflict of interest. Thanks. D is a resolution authorizing the application for a federal transit authority funding through the Transportation Award Management System Program. Eight are actions relating to street closures. A is a resolution temporarily closing a section of Fourth Street on June 6th, July 4th, August 1st, and September 5th of the downtown live outdoor contest. B is a resolution temporarily closing a section of Virginia Street on June 6th for the Free to Be Me Festival. C is a resolution temporarily closing a section of Fourth Street on June 7th for the Sioux City Pride Festival. D is a resolution temporarily closing various downtown streets on June 5th for the Sioux City Pride Parade. E is a resolution temporarily closing a section of Jackson Street on June 7th for the La Familia Summer Jam Outdoor Event. F is a resolution temporarily closing various streets in the Leeds area on June 14th for the Leeds Community Days Street Dance and Car Show. G is a resolution temporarily closing various streets in the Leeds area on June 13th for the Leeds Community Days Parade. Nine are actions relating to bonds. A is a resolution directing the sale of general obligation capital loan notes series 2025A to Jeffries LLC. I added that because I see who's low. Is that right?
Correct, yes. Teresa Fett, Finance Director. You all received a memo today. It's not in the, the packet, only because we didn't, we had a bond sale today at 1:00. So we typically will tell you what our bond sold at. Today, we sold our non-taxable bonds, our tax-exempt bonds, $23,730,000. The low bid was 3.6998, and then our taxable bonds were $3,495,000, and the low on that was 4.752, both within our budget this year. So, thank you.
B is a resolution directing the sale of taxable general obligation capital loan notes series 2025B to Northland Securities, Inc. Ten are actions relating to agreements and contracts. A is a resolution approving a contract to Bainbridge Construction for the Fairmont Street Water Main Replacement Project. B is a resolution approving amendment number one to the agreement with Bergen KDV for the annual comprehensive financial report. C is a resolution approving change order number three to the contract with H&R Construction for the new utilities field office building project. E is a resolution approving a consulting and services agreement with HR Green for the wastewater treatment plant outfall sewer project. E is a resolution approving a right-of-way agreement with the IDOT for the Gordon Drive Viaduct Bay concrete conduit reconstruction project. F is a resolution approving a contract to Knife River Midwest for the city facilities asphalt overlay project. G is a resolution awarding a service provider agreement to Tennis Courts Unlimited Riverside Tennis Court Pickleball Resurfacing Project. When was that last done, Matt? Well, Angel, whatever. I mean, I'm glad that the pickleball's petition's paying a lot of it, but it, it looks like the LEAF courts hasn't been done in a long time, and I'm just curious when this one was done last, because I thought we've done it before we did LEAF.
Yep, Angel Wallace, Parks and Recreation Manager. The last time that was done, so we did Riverside in a two-part process, so last year we did half of the courts, redone them, and then this time it was, the last time was 2020, and it's due to do it every three to five years for the crack seal, and that's what this is doing. This is what this project is for. It's really in worse condition than LEAF is, so that's why we bumped it up before we did LEAF for the crack sealing. And we're doing a new product. We were very satisfied with the product that we're using for the crack seal that we've done on the other side of the court, so hopefully it'll be a consistent finish for both of the sides of the courts, and then the next time will be LEAF.
Resolution approving amendment number one of the service provider agreement with Thompson Solutions for the Long Lines Family Recreation Center facade lighting project. Name need to abstain conflict of interest. I is a resolution approving a contract to Ward Electric for the Tyson Event Center lighting and heat tape project. Eleven are actions authorizing payments. A is a resolution authorizing payment to KP Construction for the Floyd River Storm Sewer Repair Project. B is a resolution authorizing payment to RP Constructors for the Convention Center Men's Room Waste Vent Piping Replacement Project. C is a resolution authorizing payment to Sioux City Engineers for the Stone Park Boulevard Reconstruction Project. D is a resolution approving partial settlement of a tour claim and authorizing payment. E is a resolution approving fund transfers for the month of April, and F is a motion approving total expenses for the month of April. Twelve are actions relating to property. A is a resolution inviting proposals for the lease of land in the Donner Park Urban Renewal Area, announcing the intent to accept a proposal of Avis Rental Car and scheduling a public hearing. Facility space inside the airport terminal and access to the shared parking lot at 2403 Aviation Boulevard. B is a resolution proposing to lease property to Long Lines to maintain a conduit located along Mitchell Street and Ogden Avenue in exchange for the use of certain conduit owned by Long Lines located along Boulevard of Champions and Seaboard Triumph Parkway. C is a resolution proposing to sell property adjacent to 3502 and 3504 Lindenwood Street. The petitioner is Wade Heinemann. Thirteen are applications for cigarette, tobacco, nicotine vapor product permits. Fourteen are applications for liquor license, and fifteen are boards and commission and committee minutes. Anyone to be heard on any of those items? Seeing none, call the roll.
O'Kane?
Aye.
Chaner?
Aye.
Scott? Waters?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye. Sixteen's a hearing and resolution approving plans and specs for the undersized water main replacement project, Phase Two. I'll move that. Second, public hearings now open. Anyone to be heard? Come on up to the mic and state your name.
Good evening, Bob.
Good evening, council members. My name is Keith Barron. I'm part of the 29th Street Reconstruction Project.
Which one are you?
Pardon me?
Which one do you want to talk about?
Oh, one, I want to talk about.
We're still doing agenda items.
Oh, I'm, pardon me.
That's okay, I'll get you under council.
I've got really poor hearing.
That's okay, well, I'll, I'll get you during council, or, uh, citizen concerns. Anyone to be heard on 16? Seeing none, the hearing is closed.
Chaner?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
O'Kane?
Aye.
Seventeen's a hearing and resolution instituting proceedings to take additional action for the amortization of loan and disbursement agreement, the issuance of sewer revenue capital loan notes. I'll move that. Second, public hearings now open. Anyone to be heard? Mayor, I have a question for Tom on this item. Tom, you'd be the one to answer, wouldn't you? Just generally, and I'm sorry I didn't give you a call today. I didn't have time. But on this agenda item 17, how does that fit in overall with what we're doing?
Yeah, Tom Pingle, Utilities Director. Agenda item 17 is to secure SRF loans for the pre-construction services that QIT will and is providing.
That amounts what you anticipated?
Correct, yep.
Thanks.
No problem. Thank you.
Anyone else? Hearing's now closed.
Scott? Waters?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
O'Kane?
Aye.
Chaner?
Aye.
Eighteen's a resolution approving a second amendment to the contract for animal control services with Hannah, Inc., deferred from May 12, 2025. I'll move it.
I'll second.
No one from Hannah is here, right? That's kind of unbelievable to me. I, I just, I'll just tell you, I got, I got a problem when you change a contract. I don't think that's the correct way that the city ought to do business. You wrote a contract, they accepted the contract, and now we're changing this contract out of convenience for them, not for convenience of the city. And it bothers me once again that we have no option now because you guys wait till the very last minute to lay this on our desk, or we don't have a contract or July 1st. And I don't care if it's your fault, I don't care if it's the legal department's fault, I don't care whose fault it is. It's, it just makes absolute no sense that we find ourselves in a position where we have to vote for something. And I'm not voting for it. I think they'll, I think you can do it one year, two, one-year contracts. As the contract says, if you want to bring it back in a year for a 3% increase, that's fine, but this is ridiculous to do the business the way we do it. I, I wish I could get a city contract under these terms where I could change it and, and the council has no say on it, so call the roll.
Waters?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
O'Kane?
Aye.
Chaner?
Aye.
Scott?
No, we send a message today that it doesn't matter what our contracts say. We're gonna.
Well, I don't look at it that way.
Well, I do.
I know, but I'm.
Because that's what we're doing. We could have done it one year, and I guarantee you, they wouldn't walk away tomorrow. Like, we all want to be led to believe, but I don't buy that. I'm sorry, Julie, but I guarantee you, they're not leaving tomorrow if you did a one-year contract. Nineteen, and I mean, they don't even show up, so nineteen's a resolution approving renewal option number two to the contract with Hannah, Inc. for animal control services deferred from May 12, 2025. I'll, I'll move it. Someday.
Again.
It'd be nice if our staff brought this to us in February when they first started talking about it, rather than when we can't do anything about it. Call the roll. And I, and I agree with your comments. It has put us in an awkward position, and I wish that wouldn't happen, and there's really no reason for it to happen. And, you know, I'm moving it because, yes, I feel like if we don't, what's going to happen with the animal control services that we now have? And it was a contract that was negotiated. The overall contract has to be looked at, but I, I just feel like we're just pushed up against the wall on this one. And if. As long as you keep approving them that way, you're going to keep getting pushed up against the wall every time, and that's my complaint. Yep.
Moore?
Aye.
O'Kane?
Aye.
Chaner?
Aye.
Scott?
No.
Waters?
Aye.
Okay, sir, come on up to the mic. Did you get his name already?
If you could say his last name.
Could you just say your name again, please?
Yes, my name is Keith Barron. I live at 1304 29th Street. I'm part of the 29th Street reconstructive Street Deal this year. We discovered a slight engineering oversight in the process of moving the electrical from one side of the street to the other so they could do sewer. Right in front of me and Luke Parsons Residence, we had a drainage ditch. We put it in a few years back, in severe conditions. We were getting a lot of water coming off that hill above us from Wall Street, from 28th on down. There must be three properties up there. It just comes and really gets carried away. Problem is, Luke's water would drain into me, then our water would drain into the lady next door to the east down the hill. She'd get water in her basement, a lot of water in her basement. We were doing some landscaping here a few years back, and we became aware of just how severe her problem was. She's Vietnamese, great, great gal, super neighbor. We decided on, between our properties on the west side of mine and the Luke's, we'd put a drainage ditch out, and we each had problems with people prowling around the properties at night. So we moved the property fences out to the front of the house. But here recently, the cable company decided to put a big electrical apparatus right in the middle of our drainage ditch. Can't seem to get, it was supposed to go on Wall Street. I got some pictures here if you guys would like to look at them.
Gord, do you know anything about this?
Even the address on the electrical device with a meter on the side says, I think, 2822 Wall Street. And Lewis Electric told us it was supposed to be there. Mid-America says this could be moved rather easily. There's an awful lot of places on 29th Street this could possibly go. We suggested it go right across the street from the old one on the other side of the street, or north side of the street. Gordon Farrar mentioned that to the cable company, and they, they contacted him surprisingly. They wouldn't talk to me, but they says there's a, hmm, what is that, a transformer on that pole, so it can't go there. Well, that transformer could easily get moved up to my property on that pole, and then it would be down there, then the transformer on the ground could easily get moved anywhere along 29th Street where it's wide open. It's not by a retaining wall with a waterfall coming over it. a waterfall coming over it. Trying to help the guys out here, because Luke and I both put snow in that area. When the street's wider, the area's going to get compressed more. Snowy years, that could get 10 or 11 feet deep. We get a late February rain, or early March rain like we got in 2019, you're going to have sparks flying. I mean, I guarantee you, there's no way around it.
Was this put in by Mid-American Energy, or the cable company, or who?
It was put in by the cable company, who-
This thing?
Yeah, yeah.
Gordon, Fair City Engineering, yeah, that's the cable box.
Ooh.
And they, for Sparklight. Sparklight has, and they have, they have power, they need power for it for some reason. So they have a meter there. The meter was addressed off of the other corner. And apparently, the, here in the city, they asked for an address. So we gave them an address, and they just moved it over there.
I would invite any council members to come out and look at the property, and I could explain to you a little further.
And so you've asked Sparklight to move it out of there?
They refused to speak with me. They had a subcontractor out there that put it in. He's a rather tall, extremely loud, redheaded guy. He kind of tends to coach you with spit when he yells at you and stuff. So I'd-
Gordon, do we have any authority over this? Or does that fall under some-
It's all within the right-of-way.
We still have some authority though to ask them to move as part of a project.
Well, we did. We asked them to move when we were widening the street. We don't dictate where they put it unless it, unless it's a traffic hazard.
The corner of Wall Street was initially designed to go, according to Lewis Electric, was, it's been tore up for new gas lines going through there. It's repaired now. It's all done. The claim is they don't like to put them on corners. They get hit. That's on an elevated, you know, it would, the likelihood of it getting hit there is extremely low because of the elevation. And you drive around Sioux City, they're on corners all over town. So I don't know if they're just making excuses, or if they had some other agenda. I couldn't tell you. But anytime you put something electrical in a drainage ditch, that's, it's more or less designed for extreme conditions. It keeps water out of my basement, helps Luke's out quite a bit. And the Vietnamese gal on the other side of us, it helps her tremendously. We're just trying to control our water, is all.
Yes, I do.
And then why wouldn't Sparklight move it again?
I have no idea why. I asked them, I asked them, and they said that's where they were wanting to put it, or they were told to put it. They weren't told by the city, that's for sure, or the engineer.
Let's have them come in here and tell us why they can't move it if they, if they-
Ask them to come in.
I gotta, I gotta agree with the guy. You're going to have water rushing down that thing, and then they're, I don't know why they would want to put it there unless that was the-
Like a risky place.
I don't, I don't get that.
But every third year, we get a really snowy year. And sometimes that gets 10, 11 feet deep by time it starts to melt.
What's the address that it's actually at? It's not the one that's on the box?
Right now, it's presently at 1304 29th Street. I'd love to show you guys in person.
1304 29?
It, it should bring the idea, I'm probably poorly addressing home. I don't speak publicly very often.
Is that the street not torn up in your area yet then, right?
Not yet.
But the address on the box said 20-
I don't remember.
2822 Wall Street.
2822?
Yeah. Which kind of raised some concerns with me, but the day it got completely wired up by Lewis Electric and neighbor-
It was around 29th and it was supposed to go on Wall Street.
I don't know why they were given that address. They may have, maybe they had it there before. And when they relocated it, they asked for an address. They usually come to the city for an address.
You would have a problem if we tell Gordon the council would like him to tell him-
No, I don't have a problem, but I-
I think you'd-
Be excellent. I mean, the party missing here.
Say the council really liked that mood and see what they say.
It would seem like it'd be in their best interest.
Yeah. They may not talk to you, but I think they must talk to us.
Well, it'd certainly be nice because I went down there on several occasions. She's on vacation. She's out of the office. I mean, the excuses have been a number of them.
Get his number, Gordon.
I spoke with Gordon, what was it, 10 days ago? And they replied to him fairly promptly, I believe. So.
Let's, let's get him to call him and say we would like it. And see what we can get done for you.
You know, if-
You want him at the next meeting?
If they take it down the street across from the old one because there's a-
Gordon, I'll talk to you after this.
A transformer on the pole, I would have no problem if they moved that transformer up the street on my pole.
We're going to get your phone number, and then Julie and Gordon will come. Why don't you wait and-
I can wait. Thank you.
Wait till after council meeting.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Just give your number to Gordon, then you won't have to.
All right. Any other citizen? Alex, we'll get you first.
I dropped off the call at 4:27, just after the last vote.
Wednesday. Wednesday is the last day for seniors for Sioux City schools. So if you know any teachers that have seniors, give them a pat on the back, because we are grading all week down to the wire, trying to push these seniors across the finish line. That also means it's going to be a very event-packed week, and lots of, lots of senior celebrations and graduations coming up. One thing that I wanted to say while we were going through the consent agenda is more and more streets that are being closed off for parades and for different festivals that are taking place downtown. They're in close proximity, too. So just right in front of the, in front of the museum, I think it's three days, a three-day stretch of the street being closed down pretty much, from one thing to the other, from the parade to the downtown partners to the Pride Fest. And so if you attend any of those events, just please make sure you're respectful of the space, because it's just completely a community effort to keep the streets clean. And that's everything for this week.
Okay. Julie?
I don't have anything this week. I just want to say congratulations to, really, the entire city for us receiving these funds that are going to help, you know, people get into housing, get rental emergency assistance. I just, I'm so prideful that we apply for and that we take the opportunity when we're offered, will you help this, you know, entity? Will you help manage it? And our Neighborhood Service Division always steps up to the plate and says yes. I just appreciate that. I'm very proud of it.
I want to confirm with Jill. I got, I get an email. Don't ask me why I get them, but I get them. And our community development block grant came through, and there's not any significant cut in it whatsoever. So in fact, I think it's pretty much the same, which is amazing for what's going on in Washington, DC. So, all right, Dan?
There's no meeting next Monday because of Memorial Day, but we will have a meeting on Tuesday, May 27th, at 4:00 PM to take up one item. The Morningside Days Parade was amazing.
How many boxes of candy did you give her?
I went through one. He went through two.
Whoa!
Yes.
You had to throw mine!
Yes. And thousands of happy people were on the parade route. It was just-
I meant to mention that.
It's one of the biggest parades we have. And what I really like about these parades, and I've said this before, is it really brings the community together with all the problems we have, all the issues we have, all of the challenges we have. It brings the community together in a very positive way. And it's really nice to see. The only mistake, I always make a mistake, Donnie, every year in a parade. The only mistake I made is that there were some teenagers off to the side. And so I just said to them, do you know what city we're in? And they looked at each other, and then they looked at me, and they said, don't you know where you are?
[laughing]
It backfired on me. I wanted to hear Sioux City.
Backfired.
So anyway, it was, it was a great-
Because I was acting as a Uber driver, and he was waving to everybody.
Yeah.
Oh, man. It was, it was the best.
Thank you for throwing my candy. I attended the innovation market instead.
That's what your email said.
We divide and conquer that day. And the innovation market is the beginnings of judging for small business and entrepreneurs who have an idea that they want to bring to the community. So that was step one. And we have it whittled down to the five finalists now. That'll be the next one that I attend. I really enjoy those.
Looking forward to the Leeds Parade. I won't be there, but I'm certain you'll-
You're driving.
I'm driving. I'm in charge.
Yep, you're in charge.
Thanks, Mayor.
I move adjourned. Second.
O'Kane?
Aye.
Chaner?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Aye. They must have picked-